Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the work session of the city council to order. With roll call, please.
Mayor Van Gordon, Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you. First item, please.
First item on your work session is the fiscal year 2023 annual comprehensive financial report, or the ACFA. And Megaloco is here for this item.
Good evening, councillors. We're here to present the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Since the audit is 230 pages, we won't get into the weeds too much, but the city audit, CETA, Regional Fiber and MWMC were all clean audits and were filed on time, so. We have Ryan Pasquarella. Here. Pasquarella here from Grove Mueller and Swank that is now Red W. Now that they've merged, he's gonna talk to you a little bit about the process of the audit and what he found. And there is some parts of this audit that if you want the Reader's Digest condensed version, there's a transmittal letter on pages 11 through 23 that kind of talks about the city in general, population projects going on and things like that. And then the real meat of it is page 39 to 53, the management discussion and analysis where we talk about what actually drove numbers, what kind of events drove things up and down. It's a summary of the whole thing without having to read all the statements themselves. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan and let him tell you what he's found.
Well, I think Meg already said the most important thing. It's a clean opinion, right? That's kind of where we go with it. My name is Ryan Pasquarella. I worked for Grove Mueller and Swank for about 18 years, working on this audit for probably about 12 of those years through different jobs within my organization. Now I'm a principal at a firm called REDW. We merged with a regional firm. So now instead of about 25 auditors, we have 175 people that we can kind of draw from, which is a very good thing for my organization. I still say Grove Mueller and Swank, for those of you that knew Chuck Swank or anything, they, we will never go away from Grove Mueller and Swank name for sure. That's where I learned everything. So we've been hired to perform the independent audit for the, I'll say for the ACFA here for the year ended June 30, 2023. So I'll talk just a little bit about what an audit is and then kind of what the results that we have for it. Our audit really begins in roughly May before the end of the fiscal year with quite a few inquiries about kind of what's changed for the year, what processes have changed, have you implemented any new software? All kinds of things that are really going to drive where we feel the risks are as far as our audit plan and where we need to focus our time. So there's quite a bit of time spent looking at individual transactions. We do that in our visit that happens in June, maybe beginning of July, somewhere in there. Look at a bunch of different just vendor invoices, deposits. Where did they get recorded to? Who looked at it? Who reviewed it? All kinds of stuff, just asking the most ridiculous questions of the finance department because as auditors, that's what we do. We just ask question after question until they're tired of us more than anything else. So we spend about a week looking at your processes. If we find that there's anything we don't really feel is like the best process, things aren't coming through well, we'll adjust our year-end procedures that happened in October to see, well, there might be an error. Was there an error? So we start looking at more individual transactions such during that time as well. So it's really probably a six-month, seven-month process in the grand scheme of things to perform the audit. And as part of that, the city is drafting the financial statements that you have in front of you. The city does draft them. I have two reports in this document, roughly five pages, six pages in total. Everything else the city put together. And my job is just to put my opinion on those financial statements. My opinion is not that there are no errors at all in this document. We do not give absolute assurance that every number in this document is correct. Our auditing standards require that we provide reasonable assurance that this document is free from material misstatement. So we do a lot of, let's look at larger transactions, let's look at unusual transactions. What's new this year that you've never had to deal with in the past? How did you set that up? How did you come up with those numbers? Does it make sense what those numbers are that you came up with? So it's really picking and choosing the areas we feel are the most vital, the most subject to having errors in them. And so that's two weeks in October. We're going through all of that information. So in this document, my opinion is actually on page 33, not of the PDF pages, that might be a little different, but 33 on the bottom of this document. And if you look at this, Meg already said it, we are giving an unmodified opinion. We do not feel that there are any material errors within this document. So you get a clean opinion. That's exactly what you're looking for. It also outlines kind of what I said about reasonable assurance versus absolute assurance in this document. And it talks about what management's responsibility is related to these documents. They're taking ownership of them. They're drafting, which definitely makes sure you're taking ownership of it at this point, that you have included everything in there that is necessary for these to meet generally accepted accounting principles. One thing that Meg did not mention is, on top of creating this ACFA, it's also being submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association on an annual basis for an independent grading on whether it meets generally accepted accounting principles. Submitting to GFOA also requires that you have more documentation in here than what just the bare bones are of the financial statements are required, including all the statistical information in the back. And frankly, the transmittal letter that you have, which is one of the more detailed transmittal letters that we see, there's a lot of time and effort put into that transmittal letter for sure. I believe you've submitted now 42 consecutive years for the GFOA grading and received it every time. So we're gonna go with that again. So definitely a good document is created by the city here. So you should be proud of what the finance department does with this document. The other component of what we did is there is a federal compliance audit that is also required when you expend more than, at this point, $750,000 of federal money in one fiscal year. So we ended up doing a federal audit again. We looked at the coronavirus money. Shockingly, that's kind of the big one that's out there at this point. And so we're looking at your expenditures, making sure that you've spent it and what is allowed related to it. We did not have any findings related to that, which is exactly what we're all looking for. We looked at your budgeting process. We looked at your public procurement process as part of the Oregon revised statutes requirements. We did not have any findings related to those either. What that really means is you have a, you know, a finance department, procurement department programs that understand what the rules are. They're receiving the trainings that they need. And they document, which auditors love, please document for us. Otherwise, we don't know what happened or anything. So it makes our job as easy as our job can be in that standpoint, I guess, is a way to look at it. You also have a governance letter from me, which is about a four-page document on our letterhead. Just kind of walks through what I just said here. I don't always get the opportunity to sit in front of councils and talk about kind of how audits went or anything. So we are also required to give this governance letter as part of it. That is the communication when I don't get to sit here, but you're gonna receive a copy of it as well. You can look through it. If there are any disagreements with management, they would be in there. If we had any material changes that we recommended the city, those would be in there. If there were significant non-compliance, those would be in there. You're not gonna find any of those as you kind of read through the document there. The biggest, looking at this year's ACFA versus prior year ACFA, it's actually the last two years have been pretty, some pretty significant changes potentially for the city and how things are being presented. Last year with how you're handling your leases, this year with how you're handling your IT arrangement agreements. So the software that you have, ongoing multiple-year things. So that took, it did change your financial statements some. But what it really did is it made the finance department understand every single lease, every single IT arrangement that you have, because we had to determine, does it qualify to update your financial statements? Does it not qualify? Every client this year took a lot of time just working through and getting all that information put together. So you will see on page 95 of the actual financial statements, you'll see that there is a new footnote in there that just talks about your IT arrangements. And what we're basically doing is taking all your future payments, creating the present value of it like we've done with some other things that are in there. Completely new standard this year that everybody kind of had to put into place. So that is one thing that's in there. Our audit report calls it out that that's a new item in there. But that's really the one significant accounting change that happened during the year in these financial statements. Everything else is pretty much status quo from the years before, which I'm thinking next year, there won't be any new significant things that are gonna be pestering us or anything, which is a good thing. We kind of like it that way instead of learning new things every time. So that's what I have, pretty obviously a very clean opinion here on kind of what we're doing. No significant issues, but I just want to know what, what the council, as the council has questions, want to understand auditing process a little bit more. I know I was brief with it. But I also know you have a council meeting coming up here pretty soon, too, so.
Just a quick state, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Before, thank you very much for this. And I really appreciate calling out the fact that we're following all the rules and regulations around the ARPA funding, because I know that that's been a little bit wiggly, particularly with it all coming out. We were trying to figure out what the rules were. And I know that getting those nailed down has been interesting. On, somewhere in here, and I could tell you probably the page of it, but there were some things, sort of some significant risks identified. And I don't, it's, I don't know that I necessarily have questions about it because I think I completely agree. But I just wanted to just say that, you know, some of this is around the, the, the challenges that we have with our Eugene Springfield fire and the fact that we have two different systems. And I know we've been in this process of like working on the governance for that. And so I appreciate that that's called out as a, a risk, because I think we know that, but sometimes forget that when we kick the can down the road. And I just was curious, and this might be opinion, and you might say that's outside of my job scope, but I was just interested in, you know, I, I don't know that these are in any order, but those were the, the sort of the top things, you know, just like how significant of a risk you think that is moving forward?
Well, I'm looking at it from a financial statement standpoint more than anything else. This is the second year that those risks have been in this letter. Really, I think during planning of the prior year, it kind of got called out that there are different processes. It is a risk in the sense that I feel like I need to do additional procedures to make sure that I'm comfortable with what is flowing through there for information. I, we didn't find anything that we felt needed to be adjusted or anything. So from a financial statement standpoint, I'm comfortable with it. Otherwise, you would not have that clean opinion on there. Thank you, though, for pointing out what's in the governance letter here. I mean, these significant risks, they really are, okay, Meg, what happened this year? Kind of thing. And what's different? And so from a planning standpoint, this is where we started with our risks for the year. The, talking about the EMS and the two systems and all that, it was on last year's. I didn't feel comfortable removing it for the current year, just because it was still kind of ongoing at that point. So I didn't want to just lose that and move on to other things. I felt like we needed to look at it for additional time. And really with the way that, that, you know, the EMS works, it is, you know, there, there are more potentials for errors kind of in those systems. And we definitely look at what you do for allowances related to it quite heavily in there. It's just, it, it's a tough number. We'll, we'll put it that way. So to me, the risk in essence is always there, whether it's two systems or not or anything.
One comment on that, on those risks is they changed the software in the billing. It wasn't so much Eugene versus Springfield, but they changed the, the software billing system. And they measured as of kind of different, one, one posted as they billed them and the other as they collected them. So it was, they're all there, but the risk was mostly in my, from what we have found digging into them, was mostly in the timing of it, of estimating the uncollectibles. So it will wash out when it all is on one system, but it could be slightly in one year or the other. We had a prior period adjustment last year while we adjusted for that.
Thank you. I was gonna ask the same thing. But the other part of it doesn't surprise me as far as, I know that our, our finance department is, is really on top of things. They're very, very considerate of what their job is and, and the letter here shows it. So I think we did great and appreciate it. It's good to, good to hear that we don't have some significant adjustments that need to be made. So
There you go.
We've had those way back in the past and it's glad to not hear it this year as well, so.
The one thing I wanted to add about that Government Finance Officers Association award is that it's, it's kind of a heavy lift for our department, but I'm not the only one working on it. Lynn Keefe and Kevin Vanderall, Vanderwall do a lot on that. And I wanted to recognize Lynn, who's retiring next month. And she has done an incredible job for the city. So I really appreciate her commitment to the financial statements and to the city. So she's really gonna be missed. She could have retired in September, but she stayed to get through the audit, so.
I think we, I think we all recognize it's, it's a big team effort. It's a big lift. It's not one single person. It's kind of like how we do here.
Everything.
Everything, yeah. Well, thank you. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Nancy. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councillor Pictionary. I just wanted to recognize the hard work of our finance staff in the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report. This is an extremely important report and process that's done by our, our city. And I appreciate how hard Nathan and his team work to not only do this report, but actually do it to a higher standard that what is called for. And I know that this can be pretty dry material. However, it is super important because this is where, this is how we show the good work that we do to the public, that we are in fact watching very carefully over the public's resources. And, and so much so that we use an external accounting firm to verify that we're doing it right, that we're doing it correctly. And that's incredibly important. So thank you.
The item to accept the audit is on the consent calendar at the regular.
Okay, I think we're good. We're, this work session's adjourned. We will go back into session in about 12 minutes for the regular council meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin the regular session, the council meeting, to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon, Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you. A pledge of allegiance. Before we begin the meeting tonight, I'd like to read the following. As we begin our meeting tonight, there are two designated, there are two designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in the Zoom platform. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised a virtual hand. Next item.
Next item is the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar. Second.
It's been moved and seconded with a vote.
Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Blackwell.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle.
Aye.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Yes. Motion's approved unanimously. Next item.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is repealing municipal code grading section 8.300 and updating the land drainage alteration program, section 8.400. This is ordinance number two and ordinance amending and repealing various sections of the Springfield Municipal Code, chapter eight, regarding land drainage and alteration permits, adopting a savings clause and adopting a severability clause. And Todd Singleton is here for this item.
Good evening, councillors. Thank you for your time. Tonight, we are presenting for your consideration a proposal to repeal the grading section 8.3 in the municipal code. We are also proposing to amend section 8.4 to adding numeric threshold to the LDAP permitting. This is pursuant to a mandate under our current MS4 permit. Additionally, we are making some clarifying edits. It's just an attempt to simplify the code, make it easier to read for the general public. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Councillor Mo. The mandate to the MS4, what does that mean?
What it means is that our current MS4 permit set a numeric threshold that states that any.
What is that permit?
The MS4 permit? That is our municipal and municipal separate storm sewer system permit issued by DEQ.
Yep. Thank you. Are there any cards for this? Oh, no actions required. This is a first reading only. Next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, close the public hearing. Open it.
Go ahead, have a public hearing. No action tonight.
When I open the public hearing, is there any comments regarding this topic?
We have no hands for this item and no cards.
Seeing no comment, no hands, I'm going to close the public comment and no action required at this time. Thank you, city attorneys. Next item.
Next item is public hearing number two. This is the 2025 through 2029 capital improvements program, a community reinvestment plan. Stan Petroff is here for this item.
Evening councillors. Stan Petroff, city engineer here, back with the CIP for a public hearing and hopefully approval. We went to the planning commission last month and have a signed order from the planning commission recommending approval. I can answer questions. Oh, and nothing significantly changed since the last time we presented it. That's important.
Is there any questions from the council pertaining to this? Go ahead.
Hey, I just have one quick question. And it's on the roundabout that you're looking at putting in around Mississippi. Is that something that's gonna have any type of public hearing? Are people in that community, you know, that area gonna be able to have some input on that?
Not a public hearing, I don't believe, but there's always public input usually in, you know, yeah.
I'm just wondering, has there been discussions with Lane Transit District and stuff like that on, on the impact to them? Because I know there, there wasn't with the double roundabouts at Glenwood, so.
Right. Well, there was. Actually, LTD was.
The drivers don't think so.
With LTD designers on that. And I know that there was some rework when the drivers had got involved and they had to start training on that. And so, so there was. This is, the, the roundabout at Mississippi is part of the bigger plan that was approved and went through all of the NEPA process for that. So this is, this has been through all of the public process as far as the big picture, look at what Franklin Boulevard will be. And so as we work with the property, the adjacent property owners through the design, they'll obviously be involved and have notice of what's going on as we move through that design. But that, that roundabout's actually been in design because we've received prior federal funding. So they've already been working on that design and, and working through property acquisition and things like that.
Was there another one that was planned for Daisy and 42nd that may be part of that? Or is it something different, totally different?
That is different funding. It's similar funding, but a different project. So, and that was a part of the Virginia Daisy Bike Way process, project. Yeah. So that is a different project and a different pot of funding.
Okay.
Project.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I'd like to, go ahead, Steve. The roundabout at Mississippi is pretty important because the intersection directly to the east of that is blocked off. So everybody has to come through Mississippi to get on Franklin Boulevard. And this will make it easier for them to do that because that's blind corner there right now, sort of. So I'd like it to, at the beginning, but they will in the long run. Thanks. All right, we're gonna move forward now. I'd like to open the public, open us up for public testimony. Do we have anyone?
We have no hands for this item.
And I don't see any cards pertaining to this. So this is a, I'm closing the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the 2025-2029 Capital Improvement Program, a community reinvestment plan. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's called for a vote.
Yes, Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Blackwell.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle.
Aye.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Yes. Motion's approved unanimously. Next item.
Next item is business from the audience.
I do have three cards. So please limit your comments to three minutes. And I would go ahead and call you. You need to state your name and your address before you make your comments. And she'll go ahead and put the timer on the screen. And I'm gonna go ahead and call the first person, the Mr. Stranger Craig Murphy. Actually, I say that because he was here a long time ago and was working for the. Yes, I'm just saying, it's good to see. I hope, I hope things are good. Go ahead. Yes.
All right. Good evening, council. Appreciate the time. My name is Craig Murphy. I reside at 6803 C Street. And my comments are in regards to the, the response to the storm that we've just had. I guess kind of some, there's a lot of information that myself and my others didn't really get. And so I'm just kind of seeing where we are as far as some of these items. Being out in Thurston, I think probably Councillor Pictionary could relate that, kind of felt like we're kind of in an island. We didn't really get information, whether it be from suburb or from the city. And so one of the things is the storm happened on Saturday. To my, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was not a declaration of emergency till Tuesday. And so part of my question is, why was there that delay in getting that declaration made, given the damage there was already to that point? And then related to that, I didn't see any like Red Cross or Samaritan's Purse or any organizations like that they usually see in disaster. I've been through flooding, been through tornadoes, and usually like Red Cross is right there. And I'll know if that's related to the a lack of response from the city. I don't know exactly what happened or how happened or how it's supposed to happen. And I'll say that I, I say these things recognizing this was an unprecedented storm. And so I, I keep that context. And I think there's, there was a lot of frustration I know from people in the city about, one of the things also was lack of communication. I think there's a lot of wondering, you know, why aren't we hearing anything? Like with Team Springfield, why couldn't we have the city have tied into the, like the texting system the school district uses to get information out people that way? Some information that was coming out was on websites. Click on this link. If you don't have power or internet, it's kind of hard to click on that link and get that information. And then also like on, I think it was on the Friday after the storm was when we first started having like the emergency firewood and propane water available. Why was it that long? And then also, as far as like emergency shelters for people who didn't, you know, had house damage or without power for extended time. Was there anywhere that they were supposed to be able to go? One of the great things about the storm is a lot of neighbors really helped out, a lot of friends helped out, you know, hey, I have power, come here, you can do some laundry, you can get warmed up or something. As far as like, didn't seem like there's a lot going on from the city level. And just kind of felt like we're kind of out in our own, our own little world. And things like the, like tree trimming, you know, there's a lot of trees that are above lines, have big storm, big limbs that are above lines, take down lines. And then the whole thing about how do you take down trees, the city tree, you can't do it, that sort of thing. Just kind of trying to get some information about that sort of thing. So my time's up. So my time's up. That's it.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate your comments. Next person I have is Mary Moore. Followed by Charlotte. Can't pronounce her last name. Couldn't push that button in front of you. There's a. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
So good evening to Mayor Van Gordon and to city council members and city manager. I'm Mary Sharon Moore. I live on Main Street at thirty-six sixty-seven in Ward Four. And I speak on behalf of a group of volunteers at the Egan Warming Centers. And I speak not on behalf of Egan or St. Vincent de Paul. I speak as an individual. During the ice storm, we served Springfield's community by opening up the memorial building. To our surprise, we quickly became an emergency shelter for the city of Springfield beyond anything Egan is equipped to handle. Our neighbors began arriving in droves. Many had nowhere to stay at the best of times, while still more found themselves out in the elements for the first time. More than one hundred forty people found shelter at the memorial building alone. Many were elderly, most had significant medical issues, and none were equipped to survive out on the ice. Even as we reached capacity and as our volunteers grew weary, we continued to support our community as law enforcement evacuated people to our shelter long after we were supposed to be closed. The media have covered many of the challenges we faced at the memorial building during this crisis, including loss of power, insufficient or spoiled food, frozen outdoor toilets, overcrowding, and lack of volunteers to meet the enormity of the need. Everyone in Springfield experienced the vulnerability of a blackout, just as we heard in the speaker before us. But I ask you to imagine how much worse that would be in a middle school gym with one hundred forty scared strangers. Volunteers scrouched up flashlights and propane stoves from their homes. We treated wounds with towels, tape, and trash bags. Volunteers watched their four-hour shifts stretch to eight, twelve, and sixteen-hour marathons away from their families. In short, conditions in the shelter were risking public health, life, and safety. But conditions outside were worse. Slick ice, temperatures below twenty degrees, no buses, no place for vulnerable people to go. What I have shared now sets the stage for a deeper look at Springfield's emergency response. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next person is Charlotte. Is it Helmy?
Helmer.
Helmer, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members and city staff. I'm Charlotte Helmer. I live at seven-two-four D Street in Ward Two. I too speak on behalf of a group of twenty Egan Warming Center volunteers, not on behalf of Egan or St. Vincent de Paul, but for ourselves. The mission of the Egan Warming Centers has never been emergency response. Our protocols are well-defined, such that when temperatures drop below thirty degrees, volunteers open our doors to anyone in need from six PM to eight AM. Egan is for cold nights. We are not the Red Cross. The ice storm presented a different problem for us. Daytime temperatures remained below freezing and guests had nowhere to go to stay warm. Despite having no backup and being run into the ground, Egan volunteers decided that the only humane option available to us was to break established protocols and simply remain open indefinitely. If we had not taken on that role of an emergency response shelter, our guests would have been put out on the ice to die, or they would have ended up in the hands of police and EMS, who were already working very hard and clearly had nowhere for those folks to go. In the aftermath of this emergency and in anticipation of future or similar weather emergencies, we ask that the city of Springfield commit to a thorough after-action analysis of this emergency response, both in its own initiative and in partnership with Lane County. We ask that this process involve interviews with the most severely impacted and those who work most directly with folks who are unhoused or displaced. We Egan volunteers are here for the good of our community and especially for our most vulnerable residents. We are ready to help craft an emergency response plan that works and that demonstrates Springfield's commitment to its people. That is the Springfield way. So on behalf of twenty cosigners, thank you for the opportunity to address this important issue.
Thank you. Next person is Chris McAllister. Please state your name and address for the record. The green button, the button in front of you with the microphone, we've gone fancy.
I like what you did here.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, who I don't see here present, esteemed members of council and city staff. My name is Chris McAllister, and I was born in and lived most of my life in Ward Three. I am proud of my town and I'm obligated to serve when anyone within my ability is in need. We have institutions that are meant to protect and maintain public service and safety in our community, and I feel we have fallen short of that mark. I would like to recognize Leonard Stare, who did not miss many activations and sat with people, many of who his peers said were not ours, and learned how they lost their housing in this town. He never chose politics over service when he served in the Ward Four. I also want to recognize Mr. Marty Weldy, who would do outside safety work on overnight shifts to make sure that the people of Springfield had a safe place to be on nights to warm themselves. As a Springfield resident, I'm often told that we have been told that this is a county problem, that our people are a county problem, and that this is an issue that the county needs to resolve and that we, or they need to go to where the county can help take care of them. I chafe at this because our people are categorically dismissed as not ours. They are not your problems. There is no dedicated beds to Springfielders needing shelter outside of an organization I work for and mainstream housing. We give paid time to Egan to keep the volunteers from burning out completely. We give supplies to make sure that people, when they exit, are there at our own expense. We don't bill Egan. We don't ask them to do this because our people are given enough. Sorry, this is hard because we've just buried two more people who would have been safer had we not been able to intervene sooner. We cannot, we do not do this because we are paid so well because I assure you that ninety percent of the nonprofits in this county do not make a living wage doing the work that we do. Multiple folks have retired or on leave across multiple agencies for having dealt with these types of crises year after year, essentially alone and undermined by public statements from absentee leaders. We are a representative of democracy that doesn't see its staff, its leadership, and a crisis helping. We have to fight to have ownership of those who are responsibility to put boiling notices in the language of your constituencies who do not have power, do not have water, and do not have cell service. I want to recognize Mr. Ladati's leadership with limited options and how he made it easier to serve in this crisis with limited direction. I am very concerned about our city willingly giving up its charter responsibilities to a county process that does not represent Springfielders and continues to state that the city does not ask for things that it doesn't want in our borders. We deserve better. We need leaders and executive staff that are seen outside of photo ops and fundraisers. We need you to be bigger than the issues we face. Engage in a real way and you will have real change and you will have ownership of it. Our people are our people. We hospice people who are our teachers, who are in our shelters because they lost their homes. How do we do better as a community? How do we support you in realizing all of our people are our people? They are not from Oak Ridge. They are not from Portland. They are not from New York City. They are Springfielders born and raised. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. Next person is Arwin Mastaspain. Did you do that okay? Great. I'm up. State your name for the record and your address.
It's still green. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Arwin Mastaspain. My address is in Eugene. And I am a manager at Carry It Forward. I work with Chris at Carry It Forward. I don't have anything super prepared for you tonight. I'm kind of going off the cuff. I, I'm here because of the ordinance repealing and replacing Springfield Municipal Code five point two five six to add a prohibition for the use of controlled substances on public property. I'm concerned about this because you've already imposed a seven hundred potential dollar fee for folks caught in public space. And because I serve unhoused people in your community, I'm concerned about additional fines being put on top of that as additional burden for folks who get pulled into the justice system. And it becomes even more difficult for folks to get out from under these fines. I also come to you because I have been a drug counselor, as well as a supervisor of a drug treatment program. And I know that these kinds of fines do not actually prevent people from using substances or help them heal from trying to get off of substances. So my biggest concern for you is to not be adding undue fines to folks who are trying to live. And whereas I think your energy would be better spent helping people get into whatever treatment programs are suitable for them or getting off the street. We have a lot of work that we do in your community, and I think it would be better served going towards proactive solutions rather than punitive. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Neil, do we have any hands raised?
No hands raised for business from the audience.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Any council response?
Go ahead, Counselor Rodley.
Thank you. I just take up too much time. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming, those who spoke and those who came in solidarity. I have great appreciation for the volunteers who were working at Egan regularly. And I know that this was a very unique situation and it was scary and it was hard. And it was asking our Egan Warming Centers to do emergency work, which is not what those were ever built to do. And I think all of us recognize that. And it is definitely already in the last couple of weeks been part of some, some very big conversations about how do we do this better as a community and in partnership with the county as we move forward. And to Mr. Murphy, and if I lie about this, I hope the city manager will correct me. But your question about the declaration of emergency is a great question because I think a lot of us don't know until we're in it, that there's a very clear protocol and process for how those declarations happen. And so we couldn't make our declaration until the county made their declaration. And then that goes to the governor and the governor has to say, yes, indeed, I do see that this is an emergency. So that does make it move a little slowly. And this situation particularly, and in my day job, I work in Health and Human Services, was particularly challenging because people could not get out of their homes. And so the very people that are doing the work are trying to access the same things that all of us were. We're trying to get internet and we're trying to get, couldn't get into the buildings. And so it did feel like it was moving slowly and we had the one storm and then the second storm, and that's when we really started to experience the crisis. So yes, the declaration of emergency is like, why did it take so long? Because it had to go through these steps with people that were, who were involved in it. So I just wanted to share that. And I think your call out about communication was very real and that's been part of the conversation. Times have changed. You know, we've all leaned in so hard. And I think someone pointed out, you know, that maybe it was due to challenges of like clicking on links. We've all leaned in so hard to the internet and to that sort of communication. And in times of crisis, we're learning what the shortcomings are. So that's been like top of the list, I think, with our team Springfield partners is like, how do we do this better? How do we do it sooner? And most importantly now, how do we all prepare for what the next versions of these are? Because I think we got better after the pandemic. We learned from that. We learned from the wildfires, and I think we will continue to learn. And that doesn't necessarily negate the suffering that folks have experienced during this crisis. But I just wanted to say that we are all learning as we go and taking responsibility for that. So thank you to all of you for your statements.
Counselor Doyle.
I too wanted to thank you all for coming today. And I wanted to say, I was scheduled to do, I'm a new volunteer at Egan, and I was scheduled to work Saturday night and Sunday. And, and I couldn't get there, you know? And there were a lot of us that wanted to be there. And, and I literally couldn't get out of my house and didn't have power for ten days, but couldn't like physically get. And so I'm just really sorry for what you guys had to go through. I mean, I feel terrible knowing that I was sitting in my home even without power, knowing what you guys went through. And so I just wanted to make that comment to you. Even though we're up here, we're not just sitting around getting photo ops or whatever it was that Chris said. We're all part of this community too, and we suffered as well. And we do want to work towards trying to come up with some solutions to help it get better in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Well said. I want to add too that even last week, we were already discussing this, this incident with our federal partners and our state partners. Nobody is sitting around saying, gee, what happened here? It's this, our city and our staff responded admirably, admirably, amazingly. And the elected officials are very engaged at the state and federal level and here at the city and our partners. So I'm really hoping that people sit there and don't sit there and just think that we're sitting on our, on our hands. We are not. Okay? We hear what you have to say. Everybody's extremely important, everybody, right down to the last beating heart. And so just know that. We work very hard to try to take care of you folks and take care of your interest in the citizens here in this city. And our staff has been doing an amazing job. So, but we hear everything you say and we, and we compassionately know that you guys have been amazing. You're making yourselves some amazing citizens, helping other citizens. So that's, that's what a community is about in the first place. So that's my comments. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Neil.
I just want to add, again, adding appreciation in Mr. Murphy's comments. And he is correct, the emergency declaration was Tuesday, but on Saturday, the, well, the thirteenth, sorry, the ICS was activated, the Operational Incident Command System was activated on Saturday morning. And that was what gives us the plan to get out and assist the community. But I do recognize his comments and I appreciate them.
Thank you. Those good comments. And do you know that, that, you know, our weather system, I'm going to go ahead and get a little bit of education piece here, is that our, our federal weather system, our meteorological sites is in Medford and Portland. Do you think we may have some microclimates here? Absolutely. We have folks here that are running agencies. They don't have, they don't have reliable weather information until it's on top of them. And that's really what happened here. It was, that's just one of the things that we want to look at to fix. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is ordinances. This is ordinance, an ordinance prohibiting the use of controlled substances on public property. This is ordinance number three, an ordinance repealing and replacing Springfield Municipal Code, section five point two five six, to add a prohibition for the use of controlled substances on public property. Mary Bridget Smith is here for this item.
Good evening, council. I'm Mary Bridget Smith, your city attorney, here this evening for the second reading on a proposed ordinance to change the municipal code. This would be to update the drinking in public violation. So it wouldn't necessarily change. It's just been updated to acknowledge cafe permitting and if someone is at a licensed event outside. And then the main part of this ordinance is a ordinance prohibiting use of controlled substances on public property. Recall, though, that this ordinance would only be effective if the state deals with a preemption issue where they have a statute that is in place that says local governments aren't to regulate controlled substance use because that's more in the purview of the state. So this is a second reading. You've already had a public hearing. And if I can take any questions the council has, but the next step is to vote on whether to adopt this ordinance. I have a quick update on the issues or at the, I guess, the status of Measure one-ten reform or conversation with the legislature. There still is that joint committee. They had a meeting on the twenty-third, so last week. They have some changes that are apparently going to be proposed in a House bill. One of, you know, these aren't official yet. They haven't been brought forward yet because of the session, but looking like a criminalization of. But looking like a criminalization of possession to a class C misdemeanor. And then also a increased grant funding for, I think they call them deflection. Which is similar to be getting as an assessment for someone who has a possession charge could get an assessment and potential treatment. Increasing the hold for persons from forty-eight to seventy-two hours. And then there are also some recommendations more in the behavioral health side of Measure one-ten, having to do with easing with, I think, insurance. And prescriptions and other funding kind of on that end of ten. So I think we're still in a little bit of wait and see mode, what will happen with the legislature, but we're keeping an eye on it.
Great update. Any questions from council? Go ahead, Counsel Rodley.
Thank you. So can you talk, I looked in here and I just wanted you to maybe talk about it in a public meeting. Because I, I appreciate the, the sort of concerns that folks have about, you know, what is going to happen if someone is arrested for this? And so if you could talk a little bit about, um, because how I read it is it's, it's comparable in terms of how we deal with folks who are consuming alcohol on public property in terms of the fines. So, um, but if you could speak a little bit to that, because I know and probably some folks remember, I have very strong feelings about the, the fines for folks for being unhoused. But to me, criminal behavior is different than being unhoused, which is not in itself criminal behavior. So if you could speak a little bit about that, about how comparable that is to what already exists, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure. So the part of the ordinance that's trying to get at controlled substance use on public property. Is approached similarly to the prohibition against drinking in public. The penalty is different. It is a criminal penalty instead of just a violation or a fine. Part of the reasoning, I believe, that they, when the council was evaluating that was the nature of controlled substances and potential danger to other people and having that kind of use in the public view. So that's one. And then the second thing to remember is that this ordinance would not be cited or done until the legislature addresses the preemption issue. So really, I don't like this term, but it's kind of a trigger ordinance. That's how I've been thinking about it. That answer your question? Okay.
Counsel Weber.
A couple of things. So we have a grant now for a drug court, right? And the first court, I believe, was last Thursday. I, I feel like that ties into some of the concerns that have been shared. As it relates to some of these folks, I would assume would go through that process and hopefully help. You know, move them into a different way of living that doesn't include illegal behavior. The second thing we've, and we had this conversation about the fine. And it says it may include a fine not exceeding seven hundred and twenty dollars. And I, I remember correctly, the judge has leeway in.
The judge has discretion in the fine that gets assessed and the police officers who cite also have discretion and initially when they cite the ticket. So there are two places there for discretion to have the fine be less than the presumptive amount of seven-twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Mo.
This ordinance is public property. What if somebody steps off public property and the public property? I heard you mention public view a second ago. Does that apply in this?
Yeah, I should have been more careful with my language. I mean, I don't want to parse it, but it would be talking about someone actively using on public property. And part of the reasoning behind, I think, the statute or other communities who have tried to approach this, it's just the idea of people using controlled substances. On public property in the public view, but it would need to be on public property for this, for this code.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number three, an ordinance repealing and replacing Springfield Municipal Code Section five-point-two-five-six. To add a prohibition for use of controlled substances on public property. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for a vote, please. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Yes, the motion approved unanimously. Next item.
Any business from the city council?
I don't see any.
Uh, business from the city manager?
No business, thank you.
And business from the city attorney?
No further business, thank you.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.